Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's seven o'clock and time for our planning commission for the month of June. First, we will have our invocation given by Commissioner Davis, followed by the flag salute, led by Commissioner Doggett. Please stand.
Father God, we thank you so much for all the protection that you provide to us. We pray for those that were in the recent storms, that you watch over them and make them whole and keep them in your light. Lord, we thank you for this weather that we have now with the warm weather, and we pray for our troops in harm's way, and, Lord, we pray that you give us the insight to make wise choices on this meeting tonight. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray.
Please join in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Here.
Vice Chairman Doggett?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Bieber?
Here.
Think Earl and Smysterla is out of town tonight. It's not here. All right, item one is approval of the minutes from the May 13th meeting. Do we have any corrections, or do I have a motion? I have a correction, I believe. Let me get to it. On voting on the rezoning of the property over, I believe the vote was to deny the item. I mean, was to pass, was the item be denied? Is that, was that done correctly? I voted for it, and the rest of you voted against it, is, or was that flipped the other way?
The motion was to deny the item.
It should have been switched. It should have been A's, and then yours should have been B.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
All right. With that correction, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second to motion?
Motion and second to accept the minutes with a correction. Any other discussion? Call and roll, please.
Commissioner Bieber?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doggett?
Yes.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes. Next item is visitor's section. If there's anyone here that would like to address the commission about something that's not an adjourned item tonight, you may step forward at this time. Seeing none, we will proceed. Item three is to hear a request by Garen Dodson of the Canadian County Cowboy Church for driveway spacing of 213 feet of the driveway to said lot from nearest intersection at Lot 24 through 27 Block 1, Harris Acres in Yukon. Yes, sir. Garen? Having a visual aid tonight?
Yeah. We're requesting a distance of 213 feet between the two driveways that we propose to construct for the church. I don't, I have a little bit of problem with this because this is on a frontage road. We're not on a main street. Now, if we were east of Mustang Road where there is no frontage road, I could understand a 500-foot limit. But, that being said, the new fire station that was built does not have a 500-foot limit. The Jackie Cooper Center does not have 500 foot between its driveways, as you can see on this aerial. The Discovery Church, I know that was an existing church, but it was rebuilt, so, and it does not have 500 feet. So I feel like that we're well within our rights to request to go to 213 feet.
So it's from the current drive that's there, Garen, we're going to go down 213?
No, this will be 213 feet between two proposed driveways.
Oh, it's not the one that's there now?
No.
What are you going to do with the one that's there?
We'll leave it. We're, we're trying to maintain the arena and the old Roundup Club building and everything as it has been for the last 50 years. We feel like that is a historic item. We have removed the sign that said Roundup Club, well, it said Yukon Roundup Club, but during construction of the frontage road, my understanding, what I've been told, I wasn't standing there and I can't say it for the potty, but it got bent really bad. I don't know if anybody saw that or not, but it, and it's my understanding, a dump truck went through there with the bed up. We have removed that sign. We plan to set new poles, put the sign back up in its original condition to where, when the FFA has their rodeo, or whatever other event might be going on in the arena, we can, people can tell them, it's the Yukon Roundup Club Arena, and they will find it just like they always did.
So your church, when you will not be, the Roundup Club will not become part of the church, you're going to have a complete separate structure?
Yes, sir. Our plan is to build a building to the west of the current Roundup Club building that will be 130 feet east-west and 100 feet north-south. That will be the church. The building that is there will remain there, and as far as what it's, you can always use another building when you've got a church, you know, but our plan is to keep it in the same historic type setting that it is.
I see your proposed parking is mainly on the west and a little bit on the north there.
Yes. The two driveways, and I guess maybe I should have brought that, but we plan to have covered, covered over where you can drive under it and let somebody out. You'll come in one driveway and let somebody out and go park, come back, and you can, you know, we just figure with, we propose, in our plans, we're going to propose roughly 90 parking places, and so, two driveways, just make it, well, we will actually have three driveways. We'll have one going out on the Kimball, but it'll just make it easier to empty the parking lot, and especially if it's raining where everybody's going to want to go out front.
Okay. Does any of the commissioners have further questions that I haven't?
No.
Will this, yeah. Will this require replating for those lots?
No, the lots are currently platted.
As they are with property, with lines going through the middle of the building?
If you remember right, we did a rezoning on them several months ago. Okay, it's been a while.
I haven't been here.
This project's been working for a while, and they're trying to move forward with the project, so.
When you plan to break ground on your church?
As soon as we get a building ready, the next day.
So it's coming right up?
I wouldn't say that, but.
Some type of.
We are in the process of creating plans that, to where we can. We're, we're just having a little problem getting it all together.
Yes, sir.
But.
Okay, is there further questions, or does someone have, like to read the motions?
I'll go, I'll go ahead and do it. In case of the application of the driveway separation consideration submitted by the Canadian County Cowboy Church, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move this item to be approved.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second to approve, this doesn't have to go to the council, correct, Mitch?
The driveway does not go to the council, that's correct.
So we'll be approving it here on, according to this. Further discussion? Call and roll, please.
Commissioner Bieber?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doggett?
Yes.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Item four, to hear a request by Jim Niles on Legacy Lakes to rezone Track 1 from a R1 PUD, single-family residential district, to a R2 PUD, combined residential district, and Track 2 from an A R1 PUD, single-family residential district, to a C3 PUD, residential commercial district located at, and our attorney has requested that he get to read all this, so, we're going to let him do that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It has to be, has to be read into the record.
The plat of Legacy Lake, I'm sorry, Track 1 Phase 2, the plat of Legacy Lakes Phase 2, in addition to the city of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof, being further described as follows, a tract of land lying in the part of the northeast quarter of Section 28, Township 12 North, Range 5 West, Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, being more particularly described as follows, commencing at the northeast corner of the northeast quarter of Section 28, Township 12 North, Range 5 West, thence north 89 degrees, 52 minutes, 14 seconds west, along the north line of said northeast quarter, a distance of 333.43 feet, thence south 0 degrees, 13 minutes, 28 seconds west, a distance of 65 feet to the northwest corner of Common Area Lot A, in the replat of Legacy Lakes Phase 1 addition, and a point on the south right-of-way line of Vandement Avenue and the point of beginning, thence continuing south 0 degrees, 13 minutes, 28 seconds west, along the west line of said Common Area Lot A, a distance of 147.98 feet, thence south 18 degrees, 27 minutes, 13 seconds east, along the west line of Common Area A, a distance of 84.53 feet, thence south 0 degrees, 13 minutes, 28 seconds west, along the west line of said Common Area A, a distance of 126.31 feet, thence north 89 degrees, 46 minutes, 32 seconds west, a distance of 86.86 feet, thence north 75 degrees, 40 minutes, 20 seconds west, a distance of 98.68 feet, thence north 38 degrees, 9 minutes, 53, 53 seconds west, a distance of 205.74 feet, thence north 27 degrees, 54 minutes, 22 seconds west, a distance of 114.91 feet, thence north 0 degrees, 7 minutes, 46 seconds east, a distance of 67.17 feet, to a point on the south right-of-way line of Vandement Avenue, thence south 89 degrees, 52 minutes, 14 seconds east, along said right-of-way, a distance of 337.54 feet, to the point of beginning, said tract containing 2.22 acres, more or less, and Track 2 Phase 3, a part of the northeast quarter of Section 28, Township 12 North, Range 5 West, of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, more particularly described as follows, commencing at the northeast corner of the northeast quarter of Section 28, Township 12 North, Range 5 West, Indian Meridian, thence north 89 degrees, 52 minutes, 14 seconds west, along the north line of said northeast quarter, a distance of 670.97 feet, thence south 0 degrees, 13 minutes, 28 seconds west, a distance of 65 feet to the northwest corner of Common Area B in Legacy Lakes Phase 2, and the point of beginning, thence along the westerly line of said Common Area B for the next five calls. One, south 0 degrees, 7 minutes, 46 seconds west, a distance of 67.17 feet. Call two, south 27 degrees, 54 minutes, 22 seconds east, a distance of 114.91 feet. Call three, south 38 degrees, 9 minutes, 53 seconds east, a distance of 205.74 feet. Call four, south 75 degrees, 40 minutes, 20 seconds east, a distance of 98.68 feet. Call five, south 89 degrees, 46 minutes, 32 seconds east, a distance of 86.86 feet, to a point on the west line of Common Area A in Legacy Lakes Phase 1, thence along the westerly line of said Common Area A for the next three calls. Call one, south 0 degrees, 13 minutes, 28 seconds west, a distance of 93.73 feet. Call two, south 16 degrees, 0 minutes, 7 seconds west, a distance of 159.28 feet. Call three, south 0 degrees, 13 minutes, 28 seconds west, a distance of 136.76 feet, to a point on the north line of Lot 1, Block 2, in said Legacy Lakes Phase 1, thence north 89 degrees, 46 minutes, 32 seconds west, along the north line of said Lot 1A, I'm sorry, of Lot 1, a distance of 72.65 feet, to a point on the easterly right-of-way line of State Highway Number 4, thence north 42 degrees, 29 minutes, 50 seconds west, along the easterly line, or easterly right-of-way line of said State Highway Number 4, a distance of 1,002.99 feet, to a point on the south right-of-way line of Vandement Avenue, thence south 89 degrees, 52 minutes, 14 seconds east, along the south right-of-way line of said Vandement Avenue, a distance of 431.80 feet, to the point of beginning, said tract containing 5.18 acres, more or less.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have someone here to speak to this, please? Please announce your name and who you work for.
Afternoon, I'm Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll. I'm here with the owner representing the application. And you see, the reason we're here tonight is looking to change the existing zoning of Legacy Lakes from the current R1 PUD to a PUD that's going to allow R1, R2, and C3 uses within different phases of that, and the different phases that we just heard the legal description for, break it into three different, you know, tracts of land. The first phase on the east is currently platted and has been developed, and it's been developed in accordance with the current R1 PUD, and basically, our application today is not planning on proposed changing any of the uses or zoning within that phase. It's up here, and that would be over here on, on the west, or, sorry, the east, and that's Phase 1. So Phase 2 being in the center portion here is platted, but is not developed, and basically, our application proposes to add in the R2 use to, the allowed uses for this phase, and, and basically, we modify and have a few variances to allow for that R2 zoning to go in there, since this has been platted with leaving the current plat in place and with the current lot sizes.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'll give you time to ask questions.
And then Phase 3 on the west has not been platted, and it has not been developed, and we propose to modify the zoning in that phase to allow for C3 commercial development. The proposed zoning, the changes that we're proposing today are generally in accordance with the land use plan of the city of Yukon, which shows this area to be for high-intensity residential, as well as low-intensity commercial at the corners, and that's kind of what we've got going on here. And basically, the different phases, as you can see, are separated by common areas, and I'm sure as you guys have seen the site out there, the owners built some nice ponds over there, which provide a nice buffer between the different uses and the different phases of the site. Basically, that's the, a good summary of our application.
Okay, so this item is the rezoning of, which one is the, the Track 1? Is that the one up off of Vandement up there?
I believe that with the legal he read with Track 1 was what we're calling Phase 2.
From a, oh, no, it's, oh, from a R1 to an R2, so that would be that one up there.
So that's Phase 2, which is currently platted.
Okay, and the other one, other one was to, along the west side here, to make that light, commercial.
Yes.
Office buildings and things like that, which would seem logical on, on that piece of ground there.
Excuse me, I'm a little confused. When you drive out there, there are signs up that indicate Track 1 is, the track over on, I guess that is Mustang Road, or is?
Yukon Parkway.
Excuse me, Yukon Parkway. But that's, is that Track 1?
With our phases that we've put in here, this is actually, in the way they've been platted, this is Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3. I think on the rezoning application, this is listed as Track 1 and Track 2.
Yeah, I got me a little confused.
As portions that were being changed.
Okay, so what, what are we talking about doing right here with this proposal?
This proposal is looking to change, basically, Phase 2, which has been platted, to change it to allow, which allows R1 use right now, but to change it to also allow R2 use within that current.
Is that, is that duplexes? Or is that the purpose of this?
Yes, duplexes.
Okay. Could it be?
Either, or, yeah.
One of those two, single-family?
Either single-family or duplex.
Okay. And what else?
And then with this Phase 3, which is over on the west side, along State Highway 4 there, looking at changing the use from which right now is R1 under, is R1 under the current PUD to allowing C3 for light commercials.
Commercial, okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions on what we're, on this first part here? Have all of you, all of you seen the piece of ground out there, correct? So off of Vandement, we have one entrance there for, is there just one entrance off of Vandement for that zone, for that area?
There's only that is correct.
I mean, for that area right there.
Phase 2.
Does it go around the pond, or is that a road there?
It's just a turnaround.
Okay. Yeah.
And in fact, that entrance is actually already in, out there.
Yeah, it's, I know it's there. I just, I couldn't remember. And the lake is, is back in here?
Both sides of it. Yes, that's kind of an insular that sticks out there, so it'll have just the, the one entrance in, same way out.
Okay.
Right now, there's proposed seven lots on that, so traffic on that area should be fairly minimal.
Okay, now, ma'am, you had a question? Hey, you want to step up and say who you are and where you live, and what your question is?
I have a few questions. I'm Sherry Carpenter, and I am a homeowner in Legacy Lakes, along with my husband, Tom.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we need her address for the record, please.
1316 Caitlin Court in Yukon. And I'm one of the four property owners in there, but one of my questions is, the duplexes, single-story, what is the proposal? Are these going to be rented, owned, leased, I mean?
Well, I would, being a realtor, I would think that unless he has someone that's already got plans in front of him, he wouldn't really know, but knowing Mr. Niles, I would, there would be some type of an architectural committee that would, they would certainly blend with the neighborhood, I would think.
Yeah, that was my next question. They're going to be bricked, or siding, or?
I am the architectural committee, and it'll be continuation, exactly what's there or what's going on on the corner where both of these buildings are. I approve the plans on that also, and I'll also approve the plans on the commercial side.
How many, how many duplexes are you proposing?
There's seven lots, so I don't know. There could be three, there could be two, there could be four, there could be none.
Someone may go in there, if they wanted to, they'd be able to build a house, but more than likely, someone may buy all of them and put some high-end duplexes in there.
And then my property value goes way down.
Oh.
When I look out my backyard and I see a row of duplexes, my property value is going to go way down.
What makes you think that?
Because I wouldn't want to look out my backyard and look at a row of duplexes. Would your, would you want to have a row of duplexes right outside your backyard?
Back of a house? I don't know that, there's other places in town that has that.
There's no fence. I mean, that's a little pond that runs right through there, and there's a, I don't want to look out my backyard and see a row of duplexes. I just don't. I mean, when I bought the house, I wasn't ever expecting duplexes to go in my backyard. I mean, there's nothing to block my view. Just one concern I have.
Okay.
You have another question you want to ask? Well, and our letter this evening actually stated, that we received in the mail, that we were going to be coming to a meeting at 6:00 this evening for the Board of Adjustments. We never got anything stating that this meeting was held at 7:00.
Well, this is the planning commission, not Board of Adjustment. I don't know when they?
Well, we came to the Board of Adjustment meeting, and nobody was here, so that's the letter we received in the mail.
Mitch?
Mr. Chairman, we just have to look at the letter.
Well, our concern, I'm Tom Carpenter, it's my wife, Sherry, but like she was saying, we didn't, we didn't buy the house original. We're the second owner. I'm in a lot better shape for when the property values, I feel like, will go down. When you, people see, if people see duplexes going in there. You know, it was originally platted for single-family residential, single homes on seven lots, and the property value, my assessed value just a year ago dropped $40,000 from what the people purchased the property for back in '07. It went from 274,000 that they paid to 234,000 reassessed last year, and I know two of you up there for sure are in, you know, real estate and buying property. You know, my wife and I have done a little bit of that ourself, and I just don't see any way that you can tell me that if duplexes start popping up back behind us, that it's not going to affect the price of the properties in there. Duplexes normally tend to, tend to turn into rental property, and.
Where you've?
I, I don't think anybody can hardly argue that.
Not to, not to argue with you, but that property to the south, to the north of you, the condominiums?
Yeah, Valley Forge.
Valley Forge, I think.
Look how they look.
Yeah, well, they.
I know they're old, but.
They were built to be individual condominiums, and they have held reasonably well up, and they continue to, I don't know if they sold them to homeowners, or if they're rental units. I don't know.
As far as I know, I think Merritt still owns them in their rentals, but if you drive through there, you'll see that they have not held up. I mean, they're old. I mean, they're probably, how old are they? 30 years old?
Ah.
Which I don't plan on being where I'm at in 30 years, but there's other people, there's two other people in there that have got a lot more in their property. I got a really good deal on my property, and I'm hoping to make some money on it when I, when I sell it, which. I got a really good deal on my property and I'm hoping to make some money on it when I, when I sell it, which maybe in a few months, maybe a couple of years, I don't, I don't know how long, but.
Okay. Do you have something, ma'am, that you want to say, or, okay, you want to step up and tell us your name and where you live?
My name is Deborah Cook and I live at thirteen twenty, I apologize with sunglasses, but I've got a migraine. I live at thirteen twenty Caitlin Court, right next to them. If you look at the plat they have, I live actually on the, against the pond, South House. And they are right, some of us do have a lot more money in the property and I'm one of the, I happen to be the one that probably has the most money, but I believed in that area and developing it. Mr. Niles has always been good with everything he said, I, you know, I've trusted him. I would, I would want some guarantees and ask, when I brought that property, I bought it because I'm getting to a point that I don't, I work hard, I'm a nurse and I'm also a real estate broker. And I'm tired, you know, I don't want to work till I'm eighty years old. And my goal was to live there for the rest of my life. I don't plan on moving in thirty years. I'd like to just stay there and be happy where I'm at. The reason I bought the property was because it was going to be maintained, which he has held up his bargain on that, the law and his mode. I wanted the view of the water and I knew that it would always be quiet behind me, that I wouldn't have to worry about a bunch of traffic constantly coming and going, I felt good about that. And I sold some of the houses, I mean, I sold the houses in there, so. But I would want to be sure, I mean, right now, we've got lawn, the lawns are maintained, that's part of the reason I brought, I bought the property. I don't want to have to deal with finding someone to come mow my lawn. I could find someone to come and do my gardening, it's a small yard, I have two little dogs, I don't want giant, you know, pit bulls and dobermans hanging out next to me. That's part of the reason that I bought in this neighborhood. And I know that they're concerned about the duplexes, I do see sometimes that, that does, that will eventually go into rental property, I don't believe that it will not, it will. The commercial district behind me, my big concern, and I understand Mr. Niles' situation also, is that times have changed a bit, but my big concern is that, number one, are they going to be part of this homeowners association? It's going to be just four of us, suddenly have to maintain ponds and fountains and gates. Will this commercial district also be taking part in this homeowners association? Right now, Mr. Niles does it because the, but the lots haven't sold, but once they do, and he's no longer majority owner, then what happens? That would be a big question for me. And also the structures that's going in behind us, I understand who's going to build a mortgage office there on the corner, I really don't have a problem with that, I think that's going to be a very nice office. I don't have an issue with that. What I don't want to do is go out on my back patio, where I'm ten feet from the water, to have a little piece of relaxation and look across at a bunch of bins of trash and garbage blowing into the pond from a commercial district. So I would make, want to make certain that the structures are maintained and the same brick and rock that we have features in our homes and it's consistent with the neighborhood. I mean, that's going to greatly affect the property value and I think once people find out it's commercial, I think the chances of getting another home built in there is going to be very difficult once they build a spec home first. And I don't know anyone that's going to be willing to take that on right now with commercial. So I have concerns, but I also understand, I just want to be certain that it doesn't, like he said, theirs was reassessed, well, mine was reassessed higher, so I'm paying higher taxes. I'm not complaining because I need to pay the government income tax or I pay taxes on property, so I choose to pay property taxes, but it is a concern.
Thank you. Mitchell, on commercial property like that, they would have to put a fence up of some type, would they not?
Well, actually, when the PUD statement, they're asking for some exceptions, such as you might go ahead and tell them what you're proposing on that, if you would. If you'll go up there, please, Jim, yeah, go.
State your name, Jim, for the record. Jim Niles, I'm the developer. The commercial is part of the PUD and they will pay their proportionate share, there's five point one eight acres in the commercial zoning over there. And we had the option to take it out, just make it commercial by itself or leave it in the PUD. We made the decision to leave it in the PUD so they could pay their proportionate share of it. The homeowners do not go start paying anything on the upkeep, the fountains, the lights, the mowing or anything until the phases are seventy-five percent occupied. Each one of them separately stands on its own. So for the last six years, these people have lived in here, I've paid the fountain bills, the mowing bills, the lighting bills and all of that. And it will continue that way until it's seventy-five percent occupied. Each homeowners association will enact when they're seventy-five percent occupied. On the commercial as well as on the center and I have plans to build a house in the center, I have plans to build a house that's being drawn right now by Blacklees that's doing Bogle's deal over on the corner with the mortgage company, next to Debbie down there. So I don't know where I'm going to build yet, but I'm going to build one of the two places. But I'll continue the Architectural Committee like I had from the start, it'll be maintained the same way. And if I have to do it another five years, I'll still be doing it. I don't think it'll take that long. And the commercial part will have architectural supervision, it'll meet with the city code and it'll meet to the same as Bogle's is, that his plans have been submitted to the city too. And it's been approved by me and I think they're going to start working on it in the next thirty days.
Okay, the exception, sir?
As far as the, the screening between the commercial to the west and the residential to the east, what we're proposing is that the ponds are going to provide a majority of the separation in the buffer. Basically, we do call out in here that all mechanical units and dumpsters to be located within Phase Three shall be screened from view of the residential phases to the east using site group screening, which can, shall be a minimum of six feet in height and shall be solid, no pay, can make consist of a wood fence or masonry walls or the side of a proposed building. So basically, you know, that commercial site is to be developed in a manner to, you know, screen from the view of the residential, any of the mechanical units or the dumpsters and that kind of thing.
As time goes along and these things get older, will they, will they be responsible for replacing those, replacing the fences that are hiding these dumpsters?
And I don't, do you have?
Once it's turned to the homeowners association. It'll be up to them, yes, but it will not be stock age to screen out and play. It'll be a combination of landscaping, maybe a four foot long fence, we don't know exactly, we'll be able to see part of it, and Bogle's done probably by the end of this year, you know, it's been over there. And it's similar to screening that was proposed on it and I think the city has plans on it now that has site screening between that and the backside of Phase One, which will also be south end of Phase One off of Yukon Parkway.
Okay, no, I'm just, what I'm just trying to get at is just that as, as the screening starts breaking down, you know.
But it's not going to be stock age, it's going to be landscape and looks like they are, and it's like those revisions now for all the bikes and the lots and that.
Okay.
Well, wouldn't the PUD, PUD still be in effect?
Yes.
So the rules of the PUD would continue.
Continue to make it look nice.
They would have to, plus, there will be a commercial homeowners association, is that what I'm understanding?
The general homeowners association, they'll have their proportionate share, that two acres will have it and the five acres, any PUD will be part of it and it'll be divided that equally depending on.
So they will pay into the homeowners association?
Right, right.
There'll be one association?
Right.
Okay.
Any PUD will be responsible for their proportionate share.
Okay. Do you have anything on the commercial, what, has anybody approached you or, C three has, it's not a high, high level of commercial?
No, because the corner for Bogle's was C five, we don't get down to C three and it's made consistent to that. It's a broad use, but it's low volume.
Low intensity.
And it's not the intent to have the back of any stores back into the lake, we definitely have the property out on the financial lake. Theoretically, we hope they'll be in an angle so they can take advantage of the view of the lakes as well as back out if we have to do a ninety or forty-five degree angle, it's in there, it'll open wide to see through from the front and the back.
I see.
That's the way I see it right now.
Yeah.
Whatever, it, it will be acceptable to me as a committee as well as committing to it.
Mr. Chairman, there are several other things that they've requested in here that they're addressing or not requesting. In, in the PUD statement, it actually talks about the screening of any light spillage from the adjoining properties other than the commercial. Also in that, they talk about the signage and they're not using big pole signs, they're using monument-type signs.
Monument signs out.
So they're trying to address some of the issues that would be a normal concern, being that close to residential.
Well, it wouldn't, wouldn't do Mr. Niles any good to his housing addition not to keep it nice and acceptable to people, I would think. We have other questions on, on this one, we have several other items that are similar to this. Commissioners? So Mitchell, what you're saying, in the PUD, they are, they have taken care of things like signage, lighting, as well as site screening and landscaping?
They have placed some of those comments in there that would normally be addressed by the ordinance and tried to be more specific.
Okay. Well, if we have no other questions, any other statements? We've got both y'all's statements, we understand what you're saying. Would someone care to? Our recommendations here from the staff states that. I guess some of the revisions didn't get to you and Cindy or what, what was the deal on this?
On the PUD and on the preliminary plat, there are a lot of revisions that need to be done in order for the document to be in a manner in which you've in the past expressed that you would like to see it, to approve it. Quite a bit on the PUD, not so much on the preliminary plat, but my concern was that some of the issues that were addressed, and I don't know, Mitchell, if you've had a revision since the one dated May thirtieth?
No, I do not believe so. I think they were waiting for comments here before they addressed those comments.
Okay. The May thirtieth document that I have reviewed really needs work in getting some of the issues that have been addressed actually written and in the document, such that they can be held up as regulations. There's some general statements in the documents, but not really worded as requirements or regulations and it's a little difficult to follow. So my recommendation is if, you know, you feel like you can approve it in this state, we still need to get those revisions in.
They'd have to be made prior to the council meeting, correct?
Right.
We've reviewed her comments and, you know, we can make most of the formatting and grammatical type revisions, I mean, we can make those very quickly.
Grammatical things or is it?
A lot of it's formatting within the PUD and part of.
Some are and some are not. Some are things that I'm not sure whether or not you would want to review as far as requirements or not. I mean, for instance, tonight, we've, they've discussed the matter of screening, which is language that's already in there, however, there's no discussion on what the back of a building looks like. There's no prohibition of signage on the back of a building. There's, you know, things like that, that you would want to see in a zoning document so that when development comes in later, there are specific requirements that they are following that have been placed in the PUD rather than left up to interpretation of, well, I think they meant this, well, the intent was.
Do you attend council meetings to bring this stuff up or someone else do that?
Um, Mitchell?
No, I attend the council meetings, what we usually do when we have staff comments, we forward them all to staff to make sure all the comments have been addressed before it's placed on the agenda.
Before it's placed on the agenda?
Yeah, all the comments have to be made and corrected.
Okay.
And we did, we coordinated upfront with, with staff on this and it was a little bit of an interesting start, since we had a, a PUD that was already approved, the decision was made to modify that rather than, you know, preparing a brand-new PUD. And so I think some of the, the wording and especially the formatting is following along with that old, original PUD that, that was approved in that document, which is, I think, from two thousand and six, so it's going on seven years old now.
Well, commissioners, we have two choices. We have two recommendations here, we can, if someone cared to approve it, we can approve it tonight and send it to the council with, subject to the staff getting the revisions taken care of. Or we can postpone it and have them come back after they complete it and bring it back to this body and go over it again. So what's your pleasure?
So state, so the first motion would be whether they'd be bringing it back? Number six. Draft motion number six.
Yeah, let's see.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm reading it. That's the continuation motion and the alternative recommendation is that we approve it, subject to the items being corrected prior to the city council meeting. When's the next, would it be the next council meeting, Mitchell, or is it one in July?
It'd probably be a little bit longer than that because we have to get staff comments back and forth and approved by all the staff before it can be placed on there. So it'd probably miss this one, so it'd probably be in July.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. In the case of the application for rezoning submitted by Craft and Tell, we have read the staff report, received testimony to the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff's recommendations based on additional revisions necessary to the company documentation. I move that this item be continued until revisions are made to the accompanying PUD and preliminary plat submittals.
We have a motion?
Second.
And, and a second. Okay, any further discussion? Call her, please.
Chairman Taylor?
No.
Vice Chairman Vaga?
No.
Commissioner David?
Yes.
Commissioner David?
Oh, Lord.
What was your vote?
I said, oh, Lord. Where's Erlane? I'm going to say no.
So you're voting no?
I'm voting no.
So, Mr. Turney, we had one guess, three no's, does that mean, do we have to vote on the alternative recommendation?
Well, that, that, yeah, there, there's two other options to either vote it down completely or to pass it. That option was to continue it. That's how I read it.
So we need another motion?
We need another motion.
Okay. Do we have someone else like to make a motion?
We have to have a up or down motion, I would think. I mean, we can't leave it like this.
That's where I thought the continuance was, that, that they would bring it back.
But you voted no on continuing it?
Yeah. I mean, isn't that what we're talking about, when they're going to continue is, when they're going to continue that, this, then they have to take care of all the problems, all the issues and then they bring it back to us.
Well, that's what the, the motion was, to continue it and that, that motion failed.
Right, so in other words, it passed?
No.
That's what it sounds like to me.
Now, there, there, three options are on the table, pass it, pass it, defeat it, or continue it. And the motion that was on the table was to continue it, so there's still two available, actually, three available, do you still have the deny it, you have the pass it, or you can have, can conditionally pass it? That's what the ordinance says. That's what the ordinance says.
I'm going to make the motion then, in the case of the application for rezoning submitted by Kraft Toll, we have read the staff report, received testimony at a public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff finding, including all plans and attachments cited in, cited in staff report dated June sixth. I move this item be recommended for approval to the city council with the, uh, required corrections and additions to be completed prior to going, uh, being presented to the council. Would that get it, Mr. Attorney?
It is, that would, that I want to make sure we're clear, you want the revisions before we place it on the council agenda?
That's correct.
Okay. No, I, that would get it.
Make that form motion, do we have a second, anyone? Second? Second. Dives for a lack of second, then the other recommendation is that we, um, I will just have to say that we are going to, uh, table this uh, until such items are corrected and, uh, be brought back to us again. Does that have to be voted on?
I gotta look up real quick. Yes, the motion to table has to be voted on.
Okay, do we have a motion to table this item until the next couns-, uh, next commissioners' meeting, planning commission meeting?
And make a motion, we table it.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, what do y'all want to do?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to make a motion that this item be denied.
Wants to deny it, do we have a second? So you're denying the rezoning?
Right.
Okay. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? That item fails.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused from the discussion. I thought the motion based on the staff's recommendation was that it goes back to the staff. They make the revisions before it goes to the council.
That was, that was the one that I made. That we pass it and that the staff make the improvements, corrections or whatever before it goes to the council meeting, but it doesn't come back to us. We've talked about it, we've heard what he's doing, they've got some grammatical and things that, that the planner wants in the PUD that we could hear at the next meeting and then either pass or fail it then. And we've gone through all three, we need Erlane here tonight.
I personally would like to see it, something taken to the city council clean like we always have. You know, it's not something where they've got to mull over and look at it and hear testimonies and stuff like that. That's usually been our record.
But that's basically what I'm going to do. If we buy this, it satisfies her and satisfies all the requirements before it goes to the council, whether it's the next meeting or do anything for that.
But what I'm, Mr. Niles, what I'm saying is that we are, we have a kind of a reputation with our city council that we, we, what we send to them has been completely approved by all of us, everything's been checked. It's clean, all they got to do is read it, look at it, and, and then vote on it.
Well, we can readdress one of these motions and, uh-
I think we'll just continue it to the next planning permission meeting and get it done and then resubmit it to you, because that's, that's your plan?
Looks like it's-
I can be ready to go to council, what's your ruling?
So, um, why don't, why don't you make that motion again then?
Okay. You want to make it?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
When you say make, I don't, I don't believe we can make the same motion.
We cannot?
No, we, we've already voted on-
Can't be readdressed.
Can't be readdressed. I, I think by, the way I understand the parliamentary rules, I think at the point we're at now, I think it automatically goes on to the next agenda of our-
Planning commission.
Planning commission.
So basically, it's tabled.
Effectively tabled, because we've addressed, we've addressed all the issues.
Okay.
All motions that are available.
Okay, well then-
I'll second the motion to table.
So do we vote?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table it to the next meeting, call her, oh, please.
Commissioner Bieber?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Baga?
No.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes. Okay, item five is to hear a request by Jim Niles on Legacy Lakes to revise the design statement for the planning unit development from R one to an R two combined residential district and from an R one, single family to a C three, uh, located at the plat of Legacy Lakes Phase One according to City of Yukon. See, to revise the design statement. Is this something materially different than, than what we just voted on?
Uh, yes, it, yes, it is. Items five and six, uh, couldn't go forward unless we have the rezoning issue addressed. And so it would be the position of the, the attorney's office to table both items five and six.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Niles, on, on advice of attorney, I'm tabling this along with the other items. Okay. Next planning commission meeting, Mitchell, is, when's it going to be?
We have it listed as July eighth.
July eighth? All right, that effectively takes care of our agenda tonight. Uh, thank you folks for being here and-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, before you do, could you just go through the new business and open discussion items on the agenda?
Yes, I will.
I'm sorry.
That's what I was going to do. Just wanted to say thank you for the people for expressing your opinion and being here. Next is the, uh, do we have any old business? Any new business?
No, Mr. Chairman, we have no new business.
Okay, uh, I've lost my agenda. It's a new business, does anybody, any commissioners have anything they'd like to say?
Give it to me.
Okay. Open discussion. Hope everybody enjoys the fourth of July and looks like we've jumped from springtime right into summertime. And, uh, hopefully, uh, I want to commend the staff, emergency management director and the staff of Yukon for their handling of that E five tornado that roared down this way and thankfully God let it rise up and jump over us, but, uh, I was, the emergency sirens and the robo-call that told us, kept us informed, I thought it was very well handled here. Any further comments? Meeting adjourned.